You're gonna lose it.
We're gonna call the board of students meeting to order at seven o'clock. There's Vinnie and Erica are on board, myself.
Call for meeting over, 7:01. Chris, Adele, Tracy, Nancy, Phil, David, Carrie. That's it.
Members of the public.
Members of the public.
I have a motion to see Adele for Christine.
Oh, move.
On paper?
Hi.
So moved. All right, everybody got their microphone thing?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Carrie, I'm gonna, I'm going to just put you on hold because we have a lot of people here. And I'm assuming they came in for Chris. Um, so I'm gonna let him go.
Okay.
Um, because we do have a lot, I see a lot of people coming in. And that's what I assume they're coming in for.
So I am joined by Christie Laurentano, Heather Connor, and Marjorie Groat from the Morris Board of Ed members are with us tonight.
Okay. Um, there's some other, there's some other people in here too. So I will, um, I'll turn the floor over to you, Chris.
I will, would you prefer that I go through the slide deck previously shared? Or do you want to start with questions? How would you like the format to go?
Um, is there any, let's start with questions because I think we probably know a lot. Does anybody have any questions for Chris at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
So I get to go first anyway.
One minute while you do that, Carrie, we're just gonna bring on Christine Toma into the meeting. Tell this one seats you, 7:01.
Oh, Chris, here. Okay, then we have a full seat. Adele, you'll still hear, um, the bottom motions. Okay, um, Carrie, question?
Okay, first, this is just a regular question as a, as a human. How are the kids doing? How are you doing with doing it online? Is everyone gonna be graduating in June, even if the school is still, the physical school is still closed?
Um, so it's a three-part question. I think the staff has done amazing work in transforming from brick and mortar education to online distance learning education. We surveyed before spring break, seventy responses, eighty percent were good, and learned a lot from our families. Some teams would like to see more, to see revisioned with less work. Some would like to see more screen time, more teachers live, others would like to see pre-recorded, and others would like to see less screen time. And I share all that because I think what we're doing is an experiment in education, just like we're having an experiment in society, for lack of a better phrase. And we are learning as we go. There have been some great successes. At the same time, there are points that we continue to learn on a daily basis and adjustments that continue to be made. I don't think anybody could say that distance learning should replace brick and mortar education. There are students who are flourishing in it, and there are students who will struggle in it for any different reasons. So in terms of how are the students doing, I say it's a work in progress. Right now, we know via the governor's executive order that we are closed through at least May 20th. I can't imagine reopening between May 20th and June 15th, which is graduation day. But we'll wait and see on the governor's advice and the advice from the CDC and the Department of Public Health. And we will go from there. Graduation is still set at Womago for June 15th. We are gonna honor that date if we can. If we can't, we have worked on a couple contingency plans to make sure that students actually receive their diploma on graduation day. How that will develop, again, much is to be determined. Overall, how am I doing? I'm doing well. It's been a difficult few weeks, but I also say to everybody here, to be thankful for our health, first and foremost, and to be thankful for health of loved ones as we go through all of this. Did I get all your questions, Carrie?
Well, now I have the serious questions.
Okay.
Okay, so there are three numbers, and I'm not completely understanding them. There, and what they're for. So we have 557K. We have 396K. And we have 161K. Will you explain what those are for? How they're gonna go, or any of them money? Any, are they all, explain what's going on?
Okay. So if you looked on page 13 of the deck I sent you, which was Town Assessment's original projections.
Mm-hmm.
When you look at that, the original projection for Morris was $5,578,852.88. That, when you factor in the Warren contribution and the Goshen contribution, got you to a total assessment of $17,307,418. Morris's contribution for 2021 was a reduction of $396,327.14, or 397, which I think is what you have. When you look at the next slide, page 14, the district decided when COVID-19 closures stopped and this, we started to look at the serious nature of this, could we do capital work this summer? It was determined that it was not in the best interest for the district or our towns to be focused on the capital projects for this coming year. The Board of Education, on D7, then on April 6th, approved a $500,000 line item credit because we would not be doing the capital that was in the original budget. The portion of the $500,000 credit back to Morris is $161,000, 161, $1,169.42.
Oh, wait, so the 557 was for all three towns?
$500,000 was the line item that was budgeted for capital that the district is not using. So it is originally in the budget, and we're not doing, we're not spending that, so we immediately credited it back to the towns.
Okay.
So when you add the 161 as a credit, or subtract the credit from what the original assessment was, you get a total net assessment for the town of Morris of $5,417,683.46, which becomes an annual reduction of $557,496.56. So that's how you get the money together.
I see. So we have that. Then, um, is this money gonna be then clunked back into next year? Or this is what we have, and then next year, where the next budget, you will make a whole new calculation of what's going on?
Well, the annual calculations for all the three towns change every year based on the town assessments. So if we go to, let me just pick the right slide. If you look at slide 16, this is before the credit. Morris was gonna pay $5 million, would have paid $5,578,853,000. That would have been its portion based on enrollment. Oh, my screen just went all weird. Okay, thank you. I think Tom just shared it with everybody. So if you actually look back to 2017, 18, which would have been the year before I got here, that budget, Morris is actually down based on its enrollment and us remaining flat for our three towns. You see a reduction of over $1 million annually.
Now.
The credit, the, oh, let me, the credit is a credit for the 2020, 2021 budget because we are not doing the capital work. I can't assume that we're not gonna do it, or we are gonna be able to do it next year. So that's why it's issued back as a credit, because there's too much to be determined.
Okay, and then my one last question is, have you seen any, I've been hearing from New Yorkers that they're moving up here.
It's, so we actually went back and looked at enrollment from after post 9/11, because this was raised in another meeting, to see if there was a spike in enrollment post 9/11. There's actually a decrease in enrollment locally post 9/11. I have seen a total of three new registrations since COVID began, but that doesn't mean it's gonna change. And if it changes, you know, where that comes into play is on the October 1st count, and that would change the assessment for the coming year. But right now, again, across the four towns that I work with on a daily basis, I've only seen three new registrations.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. This is David Finn.
Hi, David.
When you first started, how you doing? You mentioned you had some great successes, so not so great success. What's the definition of a, of a great success? And what's the definition that you use for success?
So, yeah, I will, I will say, you know, in terms of great successes, we've seen over 99% of Region 6 students logging in on a daily basis. So that's a positive. We've seen the ability to get devices into families' hands. If a device breaks, we're having about a 24 to 36-hour turnaround. We have our teachers actively learning a brand-new learning platform. We have our students learning on a brand-new platform. Those are successes. Some of the things I think that we could do better, we need to have more live engagement, similar to this setting, between our students and our children, particularly at the secondary level. And we're gonna announce something that will make that adjustment, starting next week. I need to find a better way for teachers to collaborate when they're all over the place, and we're gonna make that adjustment in the coming week. We also need to be able to differentiate work a little bit better. So I have some students that are just chewing up work online, and I've had some students that are struggling. We gotta find a way to help our struggling students, and we also have to find a way to get some more work in the hands of the students who are chewing it up, who are just really producing an amazing amount of work. And then a struggle I'm having, and it's looking down the road because of the indefinite nature of all of this, is we're gonna, you know, we always see summer regression. I can't predict what kind of regression we're gonna see this summer. And I'm already trying to formulate ways through external grants and opportunities that we can look to possibly extend the school day for enrichment and academic, particularly in the areas of math, English Language Arts, and science for the fall of 2020. Because I truly believe we're gonna need to play catch-up with some of our students.
Okay, just, just, uh, great answers. Just one other question I have for you. Tuning in every day, I think that's phenomenal. Do you also track the amount of hours that they, that they're in, once, once they're in?
Yeah.
Um, tell me, your term regression during the summer, what does, what does that mean?
So, you know, students go on the summer break, and they don't pick up a book, and they don't read.
Okay.
They're not, you know, doing their math facts, I'm just going elementary, or they're not, you know, in a routine. I have a teenager, you know, since distance learning starts, he sleeps till late 45 and gets up for a nine o'clock class. He's almost like a college student. That's the regression we see when school, when school comes back into session come August, right? Kids are out of mind, habits of the mind, they're out of practice, they're out of routine, they haven't done a lot of summer reading or their math, so we see a regression. My concern is if we don't get back into a pattern until August, you're looking at almost five months without true formal schooling as you know it. Now, we may, and it's hypothetical, I don't know what that, you know, regression's gonna look like, and it may look like nothing in terms of academic performance, but, you know, just in theory, we're gonna see a bigger dip than we usually dip, you know, during the summer.
And as far as the daily tuning in, you said it was 99%, Chris, do you have any idea what the, the average amount of time they come in for, or don't keep track of that?
We are able to tangentially take a look. We can see in terms of lessons, how they're engaging with lessons. We have about, and I don't have it right in front of me, I apologize, we have about 75% that are logging in for three hours during the course of the academic day. We have about another 10% or so that's in for about two and a half hours. And then I've got some high schoolers who are to struggle to keep them engaged. And I also know that some of them log in, and they may not be behind their machine, which makes some of this a challenge as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Chris, do you wanna get into the slideshow that you have?
I do. And, you know, again, starting, I don't know if I have, do I have the presentation in front of me, Tom, or do you have it?
You are a co-host if you want to put one up.
Actually, I got it. So we can, you have it, it's the same one. We can go to the next slide, and I'll just walk through the slides. Goal for this year was preparing for the future. Little did we know when we said that, what the future was gonna be. We're currently, the board approved, the board of ed approved the budget on April 6th. The budget hearing will be on April 20th. It'll be different this year, it'll be done in a conference setting like this, and we've established an email, which we will send, send out again to all of our families for feedback, additional comments, which we will be sharing with the town selection and the Board of Education. As of right now, the budget meeting or the vote would take place on May 4th. According to governor's executive orders, this would be done by the Board of Education. Totally different than anything else we've ever done. Can't say whether I agree with it or not, it's just the world we're living in. Next slide. Enrollment is key, one thing we always look at, this is the enrollment as of February 1st. You see the continuation, Warren and Morris on a downward trend, Goshen picking up students, net is neutral for the district. Pre-K, an area we're always focusing on, one of the areas, since we're speaking tonight about Morris, you know, I've said for three years now, or almost three years, that we are not just one small school, we are two small schools. If you look at that pre-K 3 number, there are more three-year-olds enrolled in education in Warren than there are in Morris. So we're seeing a trend, which is changing in terms of, you know, again, Morris has kinda settled into that number, and we'll look at grade levels in a second, but it's no longer just one small school. Go ahead.
Any plans to try to, try to put, put people together again?
Uh, you know, we went down a road, we did a grade configuration change at the last referendum. Multi-H has not been the greatest academic success. At times in Warren, I know it failed once upon a time in Morris. Right now, we're at a place where we're stable. So when you look at the grade level configurations, you know, Morris pretty much is one grade level per class. They're going to move a small sixth grade out, but if overall, when you look at it, you're looking at between, you know, I'd say 13 to 16 is gonna be your number, with a couple outliers, 19 in current kindergarten, 17 in grade 5. The area where we run into trouble is Goshen because they hover on that two-class number. So grade 4 with 21 students is one class. Grade 3 with 22 students is one class, but you get to 24 students in grade 1, we can't do one class. 27 students in kindergarten, can't do one class. And those are the numbers we continue to monitor, and I'll show you what we're looking at for the coming year. Secondary, we are in the, the small middle school under 100. We knew that was coming three years ago, we are finally there. This coming year will be the last year of just a 7 and 8 middle school. In a year and a half, we will move to a 6, 8 middle school, help us produce a comprehensive, robust program, will actually probably provide additional savings as well. The ag program currently at 248, will go to 260 next year and has reached its full point of saturation. Next slide. Grades that we continue to monitor, you have kindergarten circled, I'm monitoring that 20 enrollment in Goshen. Goshen enrollment the last two years has come in later than usual, which, just something that we keep an eye on. I'm also watching that grade 5 enrollment, currently holding, but, you know, wanna know where that lands, because that 21 is right on the edge, as we know. And then you look at the high school, even with ag getting itself, you know, to 260 students, you're still seeing a high school that is gonna be right around 400 students. It's probably hit its lowest level, providing there's no more transfers or withdrawals, but, you know, you're starting to see, you know, in that 380 to 400 ranges where we're gonna be. We start every year budgeting with revenue. I gotta move the picture slide, it's blocking, go right there. Next year, when you look at revenue, ag tuition is going to go up. It was legislated, and not legislated. Ag tuition is based on state statute and legislation, that is at full capacity, so that will go up about $30,000. Special ed tuition is based on actual IEPs, it fluctuates. We don't always know the students and their IEPs or their individual education plans or special ed documents when we budget, so that is based on actual costs. Preschool tuition does fluctuate year to year, so we're not budgeting or forecasting a change. Under state revenue, the ASTE grant received a legislative increase after the budget closed last year, and it pays a year in arrears. So they don't pay on the 260 we project for next year, they pay on the 248 that we currently have enrolled. Medicaid is something we're gonna need to watch, just because the longer we are out, the less we can bill for Medicaid. And excess cost is subject to placements and legislation. Miscellaneous revenue, we're projecting a small increase. Interest is something we're gonna need to watch. When this budget was put together, the interest rates were a lot better than they are today. Hopefully, they will rebound, but we'll watch that. We do not budget for carryover. And then last year, as you all know, after the budget closed, there was a shared service agreement created between the Boards of Education in Litchfield and Region 6, which call for $120,000 annual payment. Next slide. So again, just the revenue notes, ASTE tuition revenue is for sending towns based on enrollment capacity, special education is based on actual services, that's why it has a TBD there, it does fluctuate. Ag grant revenue legislated increased in 2019 post our budget. Ag revenue from the CSD is paid one year in arrears on enrollment. Miscellaneous revenue increases from our solar projects, and we have a contractual bus sale, we have to sell our buses based on the end of our contract. We do not budget, pre-budget carryover until it is audited, and then shared service agreement is that line item with Litchfield Public Schools. This was the slide I referenced earlier to Carrie. This was the original projections for the Town Assessments. Again, Morris seeing a decrease of $396,000, Warren $156,000, Goshen with an increase of $553,000, and these are all driven by enrollment based on the October 1 count of students. When you factor in the Board of Education-approved credit, the assessments change additionally. Warren will be down $247,000, Morris $557,000, and Goshen will be up $305,000. The total assessments to the three towns will be $16.8 million,000 and change. The enrollment, we all know it well. In terms of Morris, Morris is at its all-time low of 215. When you factor in the last eight years, it's 100 students less, or more than a third. Meanwhile, Goshen has hovered between, you know, 327 and 331 over the last six years, and Warren is in the 120s. When you look at the factor on individual assessments, without an increase to the 17.3, and before the credit, Goshen is at 8.588, Morris at 5.578, and Warren at 3.139. You know, when you look at that, you're seeing the reflection based on enrollment, where Warren's been pretty stagnant, Morris is continuing to see a drop, Goshen's retained a larger share. Overall, going to the next slide, when you look at the total Town Assessments, it has been flat. This will be our third consecutive year, moving forward with the same number. Looking at expenses, year-to-date, looking at a small increase in certified salaries based on contractual agreements, a decrease in classified salaries on our shared services. Employee benefits, I'm proud to say we've put together a larger benefit pool. There's very few districts out there who can claim to have a negative in employee benefits, proud that we do, thankful to Town of Morris, Town of Goshen, Town of Litchfield, Goshen Sewer District, Litchfield Public Schools for coming together and developing a larger, more comprehensive health pool. And I think if we continue that in future years, we're gonna continue to see a decrease there and better rates for everybody. Small increase going in learning programs, and I'll talk about that in a couple slides. Special ed tuition, we continue to watch, but it's flat. Transportation's flat, this is the last year of our transportation agreement, I'll talk about that, it's an important area for future savings. Administration slight increase, operations and maintenance slight increase, the capital and debt is down, and the contingency is at $100,000. Total expenses are $20,238, comparison to last year, the budget expenses were $19,905. Again, the difference is on the revenue, when you subtract the additional $500,000 out of there, it's a further decrease overall. Where does it go? Oh, going back one slide. Where does it go? This is a projection, looking at it, the only area I would draw your attention to here that will change is capital and debt, that will go down from 590, from 690, down to 190. Certified salaries, not seeing a significant change, there's a reduction of 1.2, and we're filling the STEM curriculum position, which has been vacant this current year. We had a mid-year resignation, which we did not fill, could not get a deep enough pool for mid-year applicants. Classified staff stays basically the same, we had one resignation in clerical, we will not backfill, other than that, there are no expected changes in classified salary. Benefits, again, really just proud of this, severance pay is decreasing, and, you know, excited that when you look at medical life insurance, it's zero. Learning programs, reduction of copier leases, finally getting out of some of those, increase to school-based instructional supplies, so all school instructional supply lines will receive an extra 5% in this budget. Ag will receive an extra 5% instructional supplies in this. We are setting up a mental health shared services to have onsite clinical support at Womago, which will be, provide a full-time clinician in a partnership with Greenwards, so this is a public partnership service. We will maintain our school-based professional development, maintain our level of support for all programs, we will maintain onsite athletic trainer, and we will continue to close inactive accounts that have not been used. Special ed, we're gonna continue to monitor our DCF placements, it's always an area of concern. It's up $50,000 from our original projections last year, but holding with our current budget, and we need to consistently monitor enrollment changes. You know, we do a very good job with our special needs population. If Deb Foley was here tonight, I would say, you know, she's her, Sharon Kozakowski at James Morris, who runs the life skills program, Linda Martin at Womago, who runs the life skills program. We keep our students in districts, which keeps these costs down, but this year, for example, we had a DCF placement, and it unexpectedly cost us $75,000. Those are things we cannot control. Transportation, last year of this contract, our savings is primarily on the decreased fuel costs. We're not busting as much with special ed as well, but this is an area where I believe, you know, when you talk about, we've been able to do it in health insurance, we need to do it in transportation. It makes no sense that Region 6 buses drive past Litchfield kids and they're half-full, and Litchfield buses drive past Region 6 kids, and those buses are half-full. Combine the two districts spend over $2 million a year on transportation, there needs to be a better way, and we need to develop a regional transportation program. Both districts are in their final year, and that will transportation program. Both districts are in their final year and that will be much of my summer and fall work will be negotiating and trying to solve what has been an age-old problem. Because again, we run very large buses past neighboring kids and we don't pick them up because they're from a different district and we're literally wasting each other's money. Shared staff is a new category. Shared staff is, um, our joint process for a shared central office with Litchfield Public Schools. The old category seven health services has moved to category eight. This includes your shared superintendent, CFO, COO, HR, instant ins- informational technology, your complete technology department and shared central office, including payroll, accounts payable, um, and accounting. Administration, we are seeing an increase in our liability insurance, a decrease in our internet service. Uh, we've closed a bunch of inactive accounts, which you'll see in the full budget. Um, and we've also transferred healthcare into this category. When you factor in, um, oh, go back one second. While the account is going up, the category is going up 8,000, uh, when you factor in the, um, actuality of adding $15,000 of healthcare in there, and healthcare supplies, medical fees, it's actually a decrease. Category nine, um, operations and maintenance, oil and electric remain flat. Talking about how seriously we take this work, uh, we have already bid oil and fuel for 2021, 2022. Why have we bid a year in advance? Because when the market tanked and oil reached literally a 10-year low, uh, we saw it as a good time to make sure we locked up oil for a year route. Uh, we have a built-in savings of $38,000 already for our 21, 22 budget. So just some, another way we continue to, um, you know, work hard for our budget to make sure that we can put it back into education. Um, increases in this column go to preventive maintenance and then the basic requirements where we're seeing increases, including fees for elevators, fees for trash, increases for trash, for dumping fees, and water testing, things that have been passed on to the consumer. Capital and debt, um, go ahead. Um, here you see the capital reserve line item. That was $500,000. That is what was credited back. Um, and then debt payment and contingency are the last two in this category. Looking at per pupil, um, the orange line is where we are today. Proud that we have balanced out some of the inequities across three elementaries and Womago. We're getting a little bit closer in certified salary costs. Next slide. When you look at non-certified salary costs, the increases at Morris and Womago are for the additional pair of professionals that are employed as part of the life skills program. Uh, those are one-to-one aides, working with some of our most medically fragile and high need special ed students. That causes for the cost there. This is the one that has driven me crazy since I've gotten here and we have to fix. The transportation is all over the board in this district. It has been. Um, we have to reroute and we have to do this better. Um, so that's why it is, it is a goal for the coming year. Building operation costs continue to stay stable. And then capital needs and debt, um, over the last, um, three years, um, we have spent $2.2 million in capital while we have only paid $1.9 million in debt. So we have finally this year exceeded capital investment into our buildings and our facilities instead of debt. Uh, when you look at next year, we have zeroed out the capital line item, of course, for fiscal year 2021, uh, we will be paying $190,000. Uh, when you look down the road, we already have a decrease built in for 2022 of an additional $52,000 of savings based on our debt reduction. And debt will continue to go down. Uh, only debt that the district now holds is on the roof projects that were done four years ago. Why does it all matter? Because we still have a ton of capital work to do, including, um, Womago, um, in term, and all of our buildings, but boilers and heating systems and windows that are approaching 20 and 30 years old. I got news this week alone that we now have a leak at a boiler. Um, this usually happens when we shut them down this time of year. Um, we'll explore that, but one of our Womago boilers may have gone. Um, we're hoping to get at least four more years out of it. So these are some of the things we're looking at. Um, just to think back, we started this at $11 million, two and a half years ago and we are whittling our way through it. And that is, I think, the last slide, but if you go one more, Tom. Believe anything is possible. Uh, this is one of the pictures that was in the budget book and we loved it. So we included it and, um, we liked the fact that it was, um, a Region 6 kid with a cowboy hat because we do believe anything is possible. And the more we continue to collaborate with our neighbors and we look to be more resourceful, the better we are together. And with that said, I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Does anybody have any additional questions?
Yeah, Chris. The enrollment projection for next year and what does that mean for more, mean for Morris?
As long as you stay stable, um, you'll pretty much, I think, stay flat to a slight decrease, um, in the coming year. Um, where you start to see issues is going to be two years out where you have that small graduating class from Morris and you're going to have some larger classes behind it. So next year's production, um, you're probably down another 100 and a half, I think, Tom. Rough estimate. And I don't, you know, it, it can change if we get people that move in, as Carrie, I believe, asked or somebody asked earlier. But, um, you should be down again next year. And then the year after that, you might see a slight increase.
And one other thing, as you mentioned in the beginning of the, uh, your presentation, uh, as far as the distance learning is, you touched on it. Uh, I think the students really would like to see a little more FaceTime with their teachers. It's something they are really looking for. So I know it's been a hard transition here for you, but...
So I, I will say that, um, Wednesday mornings without releasing, don't go tell any of your friends, but Wednesday mornings are going to be, um, live time for teachers to engage with students. So every teacher will be live on Wednesday mornings effective this week. So there'll be check-in time and enrichment time and time to work with kids. So there'll be a lot more live during that time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. Uh, Chris, uh, did you say there was approximately 400 kids in the high school of which 260 are, uh, Voag, uh, kids?
Correct. Um, I think next year's production is 383, 260 ag kids. Um, of that, about 190 plus or minus would be out of district.
So just doing a, a quick math, so 60% of the students, if that's the case, currently are in the Voag program. Is that, is that, um, a surprise to you folks?
I think, I think it's a compliment. We cannot get any bigger. Um, we have no more room in the ag program. We've had this conversation, um, and we're turning kids away. Um, it's a testament to the program that's been built. It's, um, allowed Womago to be sustainable. At the same time, um, you know, I think it is a little bit surprising how popular it's become. Um, but it's exciting also. I mean, when a program's winning awards nationally and ranked, you know, top six, um, in the country, this is what happens. It draws attention.
Yeah, I, um, had occasion traveling to run into different groups from Womago, Voag, very, very impressed with them, but I didn't realize that that was how high a percentage they had as far as student population. And the last question I have for you, you mentioned, um, you're going to do something with a reachable transportation program this summer. Is that something you're going to do or is that something a committee is going to do? And, um, if you're going to be the one doing that, I was wondering what your background is in transportation?
Um, so, um, for the better part of two and a half years, I ran, um, the regional school choice, uh, office for this, uh, Hartford Public Schools. We had students coming from, I believe, 90 ti- towns at that time. We worked with CREC. We developed a regional model. Um, so I've had a, I've had a little bit larger experience than what we're going to try to undertake here. Um, I think what I will do is I will start with the transportation company. Um, but in the end, it's going to be a decision that I need to bring forward to both boards of education. It's not something I can do in isolation. Um, so there'll be some negotiations. There'll be a conversation, but in terms of, you know, the ability to understand how a model can work, um, I'm okay on that part.
Good. Thank you very much.
Chris, can you hear me?
I think so.
Okay, um, I was wondering, there was a, once, um, Litchfield came in, is there any way of taking some of the children from Womago who are not in the ag program to bring them over to Litchfield? So you have any other thing?
So we have the ability for, um, Litchfield High School and Womago students to, um, take classes. We also have the ability for special ed students from both districts to be, uh, interchanged as well. Um, so we are a lot closer to that reality than I think anybody ever thought possible. Um, so that does currently happen. Um, it continues to grow. We're over 20 students this year who are sharing classes and I expect there'll be more next year. Did we lose Carrie?
Meow.
Remember, you're being recorded, Carrie.
Oh, I just ordered another one, so no one will know what I said.
Uh, okay. And anybody else? With no other questions?
Open it to the public.
Okay, is there any members of the public that has questions for Chris Leoni? No one?
Going once, going twice.
Don't everybody speak at once?
Okay, I guess that's it.
I thank y'all very much. Please stay healthy. Um, and, you know, continue on the feedback as possible with distance learning, budgeting ideas, because, you know, a lot of the work that we're doing comes from, somebody starts with an idea and we tinker with it and it goes a little bit further. And this is not, you know, a one-person show. It's not just a board. This is three very strong communities working together, um, and I'm proud to represent them. So please, if you have ideas, never hesitate to reach out.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Be well, everybody.
Chris, um, do we have the fire department in?
Yes, we do. We just need a motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
Is that mine? Motion to adjourn, adjourn the joint meeting.
Hey, so move.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I need a motion from, uh, member of the board of selectmen to adjourn our board of selectmen's meeting.
Make the motion.
Sarah made the motion. Vinny there?
Seconded.
Vinny seconded for 7:43, the board of selectmen meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, if they were adjourned.